Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for Thursday, April 25, 2013. I ask that everybody please put your communication devices on, vibrate or off, so we do that as a reminder for the four of us or five of us to do the same thing. And we'll start this morning with a prayer from Pastor Fred Rogers, First Assembly of God Church, led by the -- followed then by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask Commissioner Melvin to lead us, please, this morning in the pledge. If you all please rise.
Shall we pray? Our Father, we're thankful for this day that you've given us to rejoice and be glad in. We thank you, Lord, for this commission group, Lord, that you have, Lord, allowed to be in power to help us to run this county. Would I just speak blessing upon them and wisdom from above? And you said, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who giveth to all men liberally and upbraitheth not." And I know, Lord, that you will give them the wisdom they need and the patience and strength they need today. Blessed, we pray. We certainly, Lord, want to pause and remember all of our service personnel that are defending our freedom around the world. And, Lord, as we continue to remember those that have been devastated in Boston and in Texas, just, Lord, comfort hearts today and let us, Lord, lend our hearts of love toward them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that this morning. I will start now to the right and ask if there's any additions to today's agenda. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have one add-on, please. It's information-only. I'm gonna ask Shannon in a few minutes to introduce and welcome our newest business in the East Milton Industrial Park.
Okay. All right. Mr. Melvin.
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add on a brief follow-up discussion about Senate Bill 1024. I'd like to hash that out just a little bit more and go over the changes that were inserted into the language on the bill Tuesday morning at the committee hearing.
All right. And we'll add that again as item 1A. Anything else from our staff this morning?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just note that item number five is a recommendation for variance to the floodplain management ordinance that had been emailed out, and the material is in your backup. And also, on item number three, on your budget amendment, we did not get the number on the Tiger Point Community Center breaking out the general government responsibility of that. We will do that at the next meeting. However, we did insert a $3,400 budget amendment needed for animal services.
Okay.
And those were the only changes.
I believe that would be acceptable by Commissioner Lynchard. All right. Okay. Anything from other staff? Clerk of Court? Donnie, anything? All right. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and get started. At first, I'll move for approval minutes of the March 28, 2013, and the April 11, 2013, in regular meeting. I do so without objection, hearing that it passes. Now we'll go into our proclamation. The first proclamation we have this morning is for our National Day of Prayer. We've got today Brother Fred Rogers here with us this morning. Ms. McSwain couldn't make it this morning. Georgia always heads this up and works diligently on this with Brother Fred, and it certainly is a great day. So I'll read this proclamation. Whereas America was founded on the principles of religious faith and freedom -- we all need to remember that, because today they try to take that away from us. And throughout the history of our state and nation, we have humbly prayed for guidance and comfort where needed, and have given thanks for the many blessings graciously bestowed by God on this nation since its inception. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an annual event established by an act of Congress which encourages Americans to pray for our nation, its people, and its leaders; and whereas the days of prayer have been called for since 1775, when the Continental Congress designated a time for prayer in informing our nation. In 1863, Abraham Lincoln called for such a day. Officially, the National Day of Prayer was established as an annual event by an act of Congress in 1952 and signed into law by President Harry Truman. The law was amended in 1988 and signed by President Ronald Reagan, establishing the National Day of Prayer as the first Thursday of May each year. Whereas the National Day of Prayer, as mandated by our government, belongs to all Americans, is not sponsored or owned by any one group, and every American can observe the Day of Prayer in his or her own way. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Santa Rosa County Board of Commissioners that Thursday, May 2, 2013, be observed as the National Day of Prayer in Santa Rosa County, and all citizens are encouraged to participate, passed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners this 25th day of April, 2013. And I had the privilege of signing this. And I might add, Brother Fred, if you'd like to make a few comments on accepting this, but as Brother Fred is coming up, we each need to remember these blessings that we have, and too often now they're trying to be stolen from us. And I think, you know, too many people try to put a difference in, you know, church and government, and it all works together. And if we look at our founding fathers and take a tour of the Capitol or the buildings in Washington, it's pretty evident of how our founding fathers felt about this, and I'm just proud to read this today. Brother Fred.
Thank you, Commissioner. It is a privilege to work with Ms. Swain, and appreciate your members and her in prayer. She is not doing very well today. Her -- she's getting weaker, and so we appreciate your prayers. But it is an honor to work with her on this for a number of years, and to see the good turnout of the community as we -- it's kind of like the old expression that, you know, if a fish is put in a cave where there's no light, pretty soon his eyes would quit being eyes. If we don't use what God's given us, and thank God for the leaders of our country, as you said, in 1952, saw the need of setting this day aside, well, we can set it aside and neglect it, and we won't have it very long. But I think as long as we are participating, it's a good thing for our community, because, like you said, it's not one church or one group, it's just the community coming together. And if you look at the lineup of those that are praying and speaking, we have a good variety of people across the community. So again, thank you, Commissioners, for this proclamation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Brother Fred, if you'll come up, please, and accept the proclamation. He's out of town, and he'll be back with us next meeting. All right. Now we have a proclamation for Law Day. With us today are Tiffany Sullivan, Esquire, and also Mike Dubek. Mike's the executive director of the Scammy San Rosa Bar Association. I'll read the proclamation as follows. Whereas Law Day is a day of public acknowledgement of our nation's and of Santa Rosa and Escambia County Bar Association's heritage of justice, liberty, and equality under law, and May 1 has been adopted and declared Law Day by the United States Congress. Whereas the American Bar Association has declared the theme for Law Day 2013 as realizing the dream, equality of all for all, and whereas this year's theme recognizes the -- I'm gonna skip that word, hard word, link between freedom and equality, the importance of living up the promise of equality under law enshrined in our nation's founding documents, and the challenges that remain in realizing that ideal. Whereas the year 2013 marks the 150th anniversary of the issuance of the Emancipation Proclamation, as well as the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington for jobs and freedom and Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. Whereas all Americans are entitled to equal protection of the law and unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 1, 2013, as Law Day in Santa Rosa County, acknowledging the importance of our nation's legal systems, passed and adopted this day of April and signed by me. And if you folks would come up to the front, please, you got any comments, we certainly appreciate having you here today.
I thank you for allowing us to come and participate in the meeting this morning and have the proclamation entered for us, and to remind you all that we have two events that are coming up that you may all be interested in. The first is this coming Saturday at 9:00 a.m., and it's our free legal clinic where people in the community can get free legal advice, and that takes place at St. Sylvester Church in Navarre, starting at 9:00 a.m. and going until noon. And then next Wednesday is our annual Law Day luncheon, and you all are invited to attend that, and that'll take place at the Crown Plaza over in Pensacola, and it's from 11:30 until 1:00. And Mr. Spencer will be reading our proclamation at that luncheon. Thank you.
Thank you. If you all come up, we'll have the proclamation.
Let me get my stool out of the stand now. Thank you.
You can borrow one of my red high heels.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for attending today. Enjoy reading proclamations. At 9:30, we'll go into a public hearing, so we've got about 15 minutes before that. We'll move on to Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have four items, including my add-on. First, recommend submission of letter of intent to participate in Guff Power Company industrial site evaluation and certification program. We discussed this on Monday, so at this time I would move approval without objection.
Hearing that, it passes.
Number two, recommend Amendment Number Four to Florida Department of Transportation Economic Development Trust Fund Agreement for extension of railroad spur to Guff Cable Site in the industrial park. And I would move approval without objection.
Hearing that, it passes.
Number three, more good news. Recommend bid in the amount of $20,000 per acre for Maisel Family Properties LLC for 35-acre partial in the Santa Rosa Industrial Park pursuant to board pricing guidelines for construction of a distribution center by Gold Ring Gulf Distributing LLC in authorized contract for sale. I know Shannon's been working on this now for about three years, so I'm glad to see that the economy's getting better, businesses are starting to expand, so at this time I would move approval without objection.
Hearing that, it passes.
New business introduction. I will ask Shannon to come forward. Everybody's been kind of reading a little bit about a new business industry going in the East Milton Industrial Park, the old 84 lumber site. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Shannon and let him introduce some special guests today.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce the company. It's my privilege to introduce Project Breeze. This has been one of the fastest-moving projects I've worked over the years. The company came back to us in November, and I think I received the call on a Thursday that they were arriving on a Monday. So spent the Friday and the entire weekend lining up the aspects of the project and meeting, making sure we had the appropriate sites and getting the appropriate personnel for them to talk with. The company had the option of locating from other southeast -- to other southeastern states, from Alabama to Georgia, and also other sites in Florida. So we were able to basically -- they had a goal of finding a site. We were able to meet that goal and hope exceed their expectations in locating here in Santa Rosa County. So with no further ado, I will introduce Jeff Self, the Director of Operations with Project Breeze, but also known as Pryton LLC. Jeff?
Thanks, Chairman. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. We sure appreciate the invitation to come and introduce ourselves to the County Board of Commissioner and Milton, and we are really glad to be here. We, as a representation from Pryton, would like to offer our gratitude for the County Board for all the work and support you guys have given us to, number one, decide to be here, and number two, to get us to where we are today. Actually, Bob met us the first day we were here, and we were coming to see the sites. Luckily, we found the 84 lumber site, and it just fit everything we wanted to do. We had some other sites to look at, and after reviewing that and meeting some people, we decided this is the place we wanted to be, and we moved fast, and here we are. I'd also like to thank Shannon and the Economic Development Team. They have done a tremendous job in convincing us to be here, number one, and making it much easier for us to get where we are today, and I appreciate that, Shannon. The other thanks is to the different groups for our incentives we've received from Florida, Santa Rosa County, the I R R E F, which is the, I think it's the Industry Retention and Recruitment Expansion Fund. We've seen -- we've received a grant there. We received the Gulf Power grant and the State of Florida grant for tax exemption, so we appreciate that, and it's valuable not only in the financial sense, but also in the logistics of how we operate and how we go forward. Pryton is a new company, and it's -- we started in December last year with a great idea, a great concept. It's never been done before, so we're the first ones off the ground to do it, and it has been a challenge, I'll admit that. But what we want to do is create a company here that will grow fast and be large and be a part of the community. I think we -- our vision is to not only be successful, but also help the community in other projects and endeavors with financial, you know, support and also volunteer support. That's our kind of our goals as a company. And as I said, we are a small startup company, and we have basically started operations here in first of February. We took up -- took the site in February, and we have advanced dramatically, and a lot of that is through support from you guys and other people in the county that we've depended on. Also, we have been able to do that with our staff and a group of leaders that we have put together very quickly and who has really made it a much smoother transition. I'd like to introduce these guys, if you want. Okay. First is Tracy James. She's our Director of HR, and we were really lucky to get her early on because we have -- we've hired a lot of people already, and she's been really, really busy and working hard to do that. So she's gonna be a big part of our company going forward. Thank you, Tracy. And we have Mike Hosey, who was a very old -- oh, not even old, a very good friend of mine. We're both old. But Mike is, like me, from North Carolina. We were both relocated here to Milton. Mike's got a very long and successful history with Habitat for Humanity under Jimmy Carter International Group, and he's been traveling all over the world, building houses and teaching people how to build houses. So he's a perfect fit for us, so he'll be in charge of training all the people that we bring in, and also to train the people how to build the houses once they get to the site. And next is Will Butcher, who's a local Milton guy, and I've known Will for about seven or eight years in a previous company, and really learned to respect what he can do, and he's actually helped us get started here. I called Will just to find some sites and some locations, and he put together a group, our first meeting at lunch, and it was a fantastic group with economic development, with the real estate people, with -- Shannon was there. We had the Gulf Power, and it was just a great welcoming and a great education, so a lot of this, us being here, is due to Will, and he's gonna be in charge of our inventory and procurement, and he's got a really challenging job coming up, so thanks, Will. And Richard Morowski is our head of our production and management of production. He's got a really tough job managing the production, not all the people that will actually make our product. We found Richard actually at Lowe's, went there to buy some material. He was helping us, and immediately Mike and I said, you know, this guy's somebody we want to talk to. So we pulled him away from Lowe's very quickly and got him involved, and he's been training and teaching the guys we've hired already to be able to make the products we're making. So Richard's done a great job. Thanks, Richard. We've got two other people that aren't here today. One is our Director of Production, who I think most of you guys have met, Jerry Crawford. He's away on business today. And then the third is -- the second one is Monica Muro, who is our Head of Sales and Marketing here locally, and she's recovering in a hospital after a severe allergic reaction. Just to give you a little thumbnail brief description of Pryton, I know you've probably heard a lot of -- read a lot about it, but our business plan is really unique. We came with the idea of being able to produce a house very quickly and actually put it in a container and ship it out, and we also wanted the receivers or the customers to be able to build a house very quickly, which we've done. So our ideas, our concept is to pre-manufacture the walls, inside walls, exterior walls, the roofs, the trusses, the ceiling, put it in a container, as well as we're packaging the windows and doors connections, electricity, the plumbing, sinks, kitchen sink. We're throwing in the kitchen sink, so that's a -- so everything in that container will be all you need to build a house. And when it gets to the site, the contractor will be able to remove the site, assemble the house in seven days, and move in, according to Mike. He says they can do that, so. So we are well on the way. We've got -- we're still waiting on some equipment to come in. We purchased a lot of equipment so far. We made a, you know, very significant investment in here and also in the State of Florida. We're trying to get as much raw materials and equipment we can, you know, in Florida. So we are, again, well on the way. We're actually building our first demo house at the site. If you guys want to drive by and see it or come by and see it, we've got the walls up. We're getting up the trusses today, hopefully get the roof on tomorrow, and we'll start working on the inside after that. So you're welcome to come out and visit and look around, and I know Bob's been out a couple of times, and so anytime you want to come out. So we look forward to the future here, and I think we're gonna be successful, and y'all come see us.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to say thank you for choosing Santa Rosa County, and it sounded like you put together a great team, and we look forward to your tremendous success. And I want to thank Shannon and Tina for working diligently to get you here and make your process as easy as possible, and also all of our staff, Tony Gomilian Building Inspections. Sometimes we hear that the challenge is difficult doing business in Santa Rosa County, but too often we hear how wonderful it is to work with our staff, so I want to give everybody credit. I know there'll be a lot of people who are watching this live today, and they'll ask, "Well, how do I apply for a job with this new company?" Could you tell us how to do that?
Yeah, we decided to work with the Workforce Escarosa here in Milton, so if you go online and put in an application, we already use that resource, which is a fantastic resource because they really help us screen, you know, people, the types of people we want to bring in the company, and we, you know, we're hiring close to, what, 30 people so far? And our goal is this year to be close to 100 this year, and in two or three years, we hope to have 200. And my personal opinion is we're gonna have a lot more than that, based on what I've seen since we've been here, and the sales force is really going out, and they're putting a lot of pressure on us to get going and start building houses very soon, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coon.
Jeff, before you get away, I want everybody to know, hopefully I'm not saying something I shouldn't, but Jeff's kind of being modest. Jeff's a chemical engineer, correct?
Chemist.
Chemist. And part of what this is, is a proprietary process for these walls that, if I'm right, they won't mold, water repellent, won't rot, the building won't have termites in it because there's nothing there for termites to eat. No wood. Just, and I call them houses in a can, because, like he said, they all put them in Conax boxes and ship them overseas, and right now this is only for third-world countries, because they're not licensed for marketing in the United States. But I had a discussion yesterday with the State Director of EOC, and he wants to keep abreast of this project, because he says, you know, as soon as you guys are able to sell them in the United States, that's something he wants to run up the flagpole for FEMA for any type of disasters that we have in the United States.
Absolutely.
So we'll keep abreast of that, keep working with you, and as soon as we can, we'll get that information to Mr. Coon with the state.
Absolutely. We, you know, our target right now is the Caribbean countries, South America, Central America, just because we can get in there quicker, and it's affordable housing, which they need. I mean, all these countries are desperate for housing, especially houses that they can set up very quickly and move in, and it doesn't take a lot of skilled labor to put them together, so. And again, you're right, the houses are very durable, very strong, totally fireproof, you can't burn them, waterproof. If you have a flood, you just clean out and pressure wash it and move back in. So it's a very, it's a very unique technology that we're developing, and we just know it's gonna grow dramatically all over. We will be getting into domestic sales once we get some more testing and approvals.
Great. Well, thanks for coming out.
We'll sell you a house if you want to buy it.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you. First of all, welcome. I got to meet you this morning. It's the first time I've met you. I've met Will before. He actually is -- just lives right down the street from my mom, so our kids are playing together this Sunday. You have an exciting project here, obviously. There's a lot of buzz that's been generated about it. I want to point out again that this is the first I R R E F grant that's been awarded in Santa Rosa County.
Oh, really?
And that's a rigorous process to go through, so that shows, you know, the faith that the state has in your project. You've put together a great team, so I look forward to hearing more about it in the coming years, greater and greater news.
I agree. It was a very nice award. We feel very fortunate to be a part of that.
Commissioner Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to add my thanks and welcome. We really appreciate the confidence you've placed in us, and we reciprocate by placing that same confidence in you. Anything this board can do for you, you merely have to ask. We will do anything we can to ensure your success.
I appreciate that.
We look forward to a long, happy relationship.
We do, too. We do, too. And that's the first thing Bob said that night. We had dinner and said, "Anything we can do, don't even hesitate to ask, it will get done." So that kind of confidence really helped us, so thanks.
Once again, Jeff, thank you and welcome to Santa Rosa. Now Shannon, the accolades are over, so go get some more. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Always good to start out with good news. All right. Another, we'll start now with the Administrative Committee. Item number one is recommend -- oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. I was seeing if my
are over, so go get some more. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Always good to start out with good news. All right, another, we'll start now with the Administrative Committee. Item number one is recommend, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. I was seeing if my vice chairman was on his toes, and he reminded me we do have a public hearing today. So it is 9:30. I will now open the public hearing. This public hearing is to hear vacation of a portion of Big Oak Loop contingent upon conveyance of easement for turnaround access as requested by David Daniel representing Steve Wagner. Mr. Walker, can, or Ms. Jones, can you bring us?
Perhaps Mr. Whitfield and I can tag team it a bit. If I can ask Mr. Blaylock to maybe put the aerial up. There is a request before you today to vacate a segment of Big Oak Loop. Big Oak Loop is, for lack of a better term, a cut-through road between Alley Grimes Road and Highway 87. The petitioner wishes to develop a subdivision on the parcel you see here that I'm indicating and the parcel that is here. So a subdivision in this area and wishes to vacate Big Oak Loop from this point onward. Now, Mr. Whitfield and I were just kind of comparing legal descriptions, and we would ask that the applicant perhaps clarify where the terminus of this vacation lies. One legal description would seem to indicate that it would end here. So we would just be, you would just be, he is requesting that you just vacate this center segment. However, another legal description seems to indicate that the vacation come all the way to Alley Grimes Road. I don't know that this parcel that I'm indicating now would have access if that were done, but we can ask him to please clarify that. But that is the request before you today, is a segment of Alley Grimes Road. You have some backup material, which does indicate that there was a rezoning of this property in 2006, and the condition placed on that rezoning was that Alley Grimes retained the same connectivity. Certainly, you all can make the decision now on whether you wish to vacate the indicated segment, but you may wish to ask the applicant where he expects the termination of the vacation to lie.
All right. If I can get the applicant to come forward and clarify that.
Thank you. Did you want me to go ahead with the name and address and everything?
Yes, please.
David Daniel. My address is 1006 Pleasant Grove, Peachtree City, Georgia. I own the commercial parcel just south of the land that we're discussing today. I am representing the owner of the parcel of land that we're discussing today. It is within that parcel where this road is to be vacated, at least our request for it to be vacated. The owner's name is Steve Wagner, and he is here today. I, on Mr. Wagner's behalf, am listed as the petitioner of this vacate request. Why don't I just go ahead and just proceed with what I was going to say, and I can certainly clear up, you know, that issue there. Do you have as, or does the staff have Exhibit A, legal sketch of this, Mr. Whitfield?
We do.
This is what was requested by the staff. The engineer for the developer has done that, and I think it really clears up exactly where we would like it to be vacated. And if we can put that up, that'd be great.
All right. The board does have that in our backup, but do we have it on PDF?
We have several.
Okay. While you do that, let me just, let me just give you our position here. The reasons that we believe that the vacation of this prescriptive easement cut-through is in the best interest of the owner, the developer, and from your perspective, the county are four or five reasons. First of all, Big Oak Loop is a 12-foot wide dirt road that is a prescriptive easement that runs through this parcel. It does not conform to any county standards of subdivision roads. The developer cannot and will not develop this subdivision due to safety and security issues if a road is allowed to run through this subdivision. It would not be safe and it would not be secure for future homeowners if this was allowed. Secondly, the road cannot be used as a part or an extension of the proposed road system within the subdivision either. Great care has been made in the road design of the subdivision. The county has before it now a preliminary plat of the proposed roads in there, and this road design does a number of things. It provides security and through county standards provides safety within the subdivision. It conforms to county road design and construction. It also maximizes lot size and saves large and very old oak trees. The name of the subdivision is Heritage Oaks. From the beginning, and even in the boundary survey that goes back three or four years, not only was the boundary survey showing its boundaries, but every oak tree in there that was greater than 18 inches, I believe, is what we did, was plotted on this boundary survey. And so now the developer, the engineer, designer of this, has created roads that, as you can see, if you have a plat here, I don't know if you do, but even going into the subdivision from Highway 87, the road bends and the loop in there bends in a number of areas. One reason for this is to save very old and beautiful oak trees. If the Big Oak Loop was allowed to stay, it would destroy a number, a number of those. Continuing on now, the third reason we think that it should be vacated is that we don't believe that anyone will be landlocked at all based on this request. Fourthly, we believe that there are few, if any, negative impacts to the local community while there are many, many benefits, not the least of which are economic. As was said earlier here, the builder, there's great economic benefits in this proposed operation as well. Jobs from the infrastructure development to create the subdivision, jobs from home construction. There's going to be 40 homes, give or take, back there. The county will save money on road maintenance. Understand that there's hundreds of miles of roads that the county maintains, prescriptive easements that they maintain on a yearly basis. Granted, this is not a long, you know, section, but still, it, every little bit helps, I would assume. And finally, maybe most importantly to the county, with those homes back there, we estimate $80,000 to $130,000 worth of tax revenue every year for many, many years. So we think there's benefit to the county here in terms of monetary. So that's basically what we wanted to say today. In a nutshell, the developer will not do the project if this road is left in place. No one's getting hurt here, we don't believe, and we believe that there are significant economic benefits to the county. In closing, I would like to thank the county zoning staff, Public Works, for helping us through this. We appreciate your learned counsel on this, very knowledgeable people and diligent public servants. So that's basically what I had to say, and I'd be glad to answer those questions as it pertains to the rezoning, which interestingly enough, I did back in the day in '06. And also, I think, hopefully now, we can put this up to see exactly where this vacate would be. It goes from the southern part of that parcel all the way to Alley Grimes. And as you see from the notice of public hearing, that this is contingent on the developer creating a 30-foot easement so that from the south side, the grading equipment can get into that portion that's not going to be vacated and turn around. And that was part of the request. That is already in the plat. It has been done, and that's absolutely not a problem.
When you say that's been done, the turnaround or the cul-de-sac would be done on your partial?
Absolutely.
Okay. Why, what reasoning do you have to want to go all the way to Alley Grimes Road versus stopping at your property line right there where the hand is?
Right. For one, if we left it, the grading equipment would have to go up that south side, do the turnaround, and go back out to 87, turn right on 87, and go back up Alley Grimes, and then to the northwest.
All right. What is your proposal for these folks' access to those partials from Alley Grimes to your property line?
I'm not, I'm not following your.
Okay. You got, you got partial 29-1, 29-23-1.
Right.
Of course, 29 and 23-1 have access off Alley Grimes.
No, no.
No? Okay, hang on just a second. Yeah, we'll get with you, sir. And if I'm wrong, I'll get staff to explain that. 29 would have a very minimal, and then you got that little wedge down there with no number on it. So my first concern would be how those folks would all have access to their property unless you intend to.
Okay. I'm sorry. 29.1 and 23.1, if I can identify it like that, are, have addresses on Alley Grimes Road. There is no landlocking of anyone. That is, those addresses are Alley Grimes. So to get to 87, they simply turn left and go to 87.
All right. 29-1 and the little wedge. Who owns the little wedge? You got a wedge of property up here.
I'm sorry. I'm not understanding.
You see the, see right there where the hand is, that little wedge?
Oh, I'm not sure what that is. That, to me, on some documents, on some boundary surveys, that is owned by Mr. Taylor. And actually, the one right here doesn't even show it. So I'm not really, you have to go back in your, you guys' records to determine what that is. I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
And I'm a layman, so I'm going to let the attorney field this one, but I don't understand where, and I mean this in the legal sense, I don't understand where your right to request the abatement of this right-of-way comes from when it leaves your property. I understand that you're the spokesman for the owner. I understand the owner's right to request the vacation of this right-of-way, and don't even question that right. I, as a layman, don't understand where the right comes from to have you ask this board to vacate something across somebody else's property. That's like me hiring somebody to go trim your hedge. You may not like the way I had it trimmed. It's not mine. I have no interest in it. So I'm bothered by that, Madam Attorney.
Well, if the question is why I'm doing it, Mr. Wagner lives in Ohio.
That's not the question. Where does the right come from? From some third party to request that the Melvin family vacates something that we have had, and not for confusion, we don't own this piece of property. But just as an example, there's a vacation across the property. It's got nothing to do with you or your client. And where does that right to ask for that vacation come from? I don't understand.
Okay, let me.
That we have a right to work that, unless the people that own the property come and ask us for the vacation. I would certainly understand that, but I do not understand this.
The applicant does have the legal right to do what he's doing as a practical matter. And I'm thinking of subdivisions that have very small lots whereby they might want an alley vacated or something like that. We do not request that every person who owns 50 feet along that alleyway become an applicant. And one may apply. So he does have the right to do that. It's up to the board to decide whether it wishes to, of course.
And I didn't mean that as being hostile to the development. I am more than happy to entertain the vacation across the property that they own.
Right.
They've got every right, and at least this layman's mind, to ask for that. But I'm going to move very slow on anything outside the property line unless the people that are affected are here and they want to agree to it. I'm not going to agree to it. I'll tell you that right now.
Okay. Let me ask you this while, on that same subject. And that's part of my concern and a reason for the questioning. I appreciate you being cognizant of the county having to go to the extra effort to take care of the road, but that's Mr. Whitfield's problem, not yours or mine. So let's take that off the table. Property that I'm interested in is property marked number 17 up there from where the hand is to right above 20, or 19-2. So is leaving that part between 29 and 23 out of this discussion a showstopper for your development?
What would have to happen, honestly? Would, just like we have a turnaround?
Sure.
In lot, whatever it is, 23 on the southeast corner?
Correct.
There would have to be a turnaround on the north corner there as well, which impedes another lot.
Okay. All right.
And as I said before, the equipment would have to go up.
We're going to take that off the table. That's Mr. Whitfield's problem. Let him deal with it. My concern, as well as Commissioner Melvin, is, you know, these other partials really have nothing to do with your development. And I'm willing to look at, you know, vacation of 17, the road across 17, but I agree with Commissioner Melvin. I'd have to go real slow on anything else and hear from the owners of that property. So if you're willing to withdraw it back to 17, I think we can move along a little quicker here. So that's your, that's your call. Commissioner, I'd like to hear from our Public Works Director, though, on some of the, some of this. It might help us clarify some of it. Davis?
I don't know if we could get an aerial map up that would show. I think what may be more of a problem in line with what Commissioners Cole and Melvin are saying is it appears that parcel 29.1 may have an access problem. If you could see it on an aerial map, you could actually see where the home is in the driveway. It seems like there could be an access problem if that's not provided for. So that falls right in line with what you're saying about affecting other, other property owners. So if we could see that, it may not be, if you can tell there, close to Alley, and that's not real clear, but if you can tell, close to Alley Grimes Road, you can see the, you know, the yellow rectangle where that. Yeah, that, that might even be worse. You can see where that yellow rectangle is, which would show the approximate location of the home. Yes, right there. And so they have a driveway off, off of Alley Grimes that cuts through another property. So it could be an access problem if that's not, if there's not some sort of provision by the developer for that.
Is that property on Alley Grimes, that home?
Their driveway has to come through another property.
But I mean, that home's address.
There's another property. They have to come through the Taylor's property. Part of the, part of the Big Oak Loop road comes through the Taylor's property.
Right.
It looks like before they can access their property, is what it appears to me.
Right. So the Taylor's, I mean, it seems to me the home has access to Alley Grimes. The Taylor's have a concrete driveway to Alley Grimes, and both the Taylor's and that individual basically take back their land.
Okay. I think where we're getting to on this is you're going to get a whole lot more willingness from this board if we just concentrate on, on the part of the Big Oak Loop that crosses your partial.
Okay.
Now, whether you cul-de-sac on, on your partial, or you're able to acquire that little wedge and build a cul-de-sac there, if we could write that in as a caveat, and you're willing to go with that. I've heard from Commissioner Melvin. I haven't heard from the other two commissioners, but I'd be more inclined to move forward with this than I am right this time. I want to take these lots out of the picture, basically.
Okay. All right. Well, clearly, to tell you that originally, we had, we had thought to do that. And then with counsel, and I don't mean legal counsel, I just mean counsel with, with staff and other folks, that seemed to make even more sense. In fact, if you look at the record, we actually changed this request from within the subdivision all the way to Alley Grimes. And perhaps we overstepped that, weren't trying to, but perhaps if you feel that we did, then that's fine. I would think that the developer could go ahead and make another turnaround there. And I don't believe that. This is just me, and I'm just an owner, you know. That would probably not be a showstopper, in my humble opinion, for the developer. And so, you know, that, if that's what we're looking at today, then that would be fine, from my perspective.
Commissioner Melvin represents that district. Commissioner Melvin, if you want to go on with. Commissioner Melvin represents that district. Commissioner Melvin, if you wanna go on with this discussion at that point?
Just a, a, a simple up or down, uh, if you would like for us to consider, uh, that portion of Big Oak that transits your property, I'm willing to, to give that a fair hearing. Otherwise, I'm, I'm not interested at all.
Okay.
In imposing on others.
Okay, sounds good. That'd be fine.
And a lot of times, staff will try to work through these things, but, uh, and, and we appreciate all the effort they do. But, uh, you know, this is kind of where we start making the sausage out of it.
Yep, absolutely.
Be happy to work with you. Love to see the, the project go. Love to have more people on the tax rolls. But we're not gonna impact the lives of, of your neighbors over something that, that, that's not necessary.
Right. Um, so, can that be, uh, considered today?
Yes, sir. We're gonna hear from, we're gonna hear from other public, and then we'll, we'll continue discussing this.
Sure.
You know, once we're over that hump, I see a reason to go ahead and continue discussion. But if we go and get past there, then we might as well shut her down.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
For the record, uh, we have legal descriptions that we're gonna be discussing. I want to be very clear that we're not talking about the legal descriptions that are filed with this request. We're talking about the legal descriptions that terminate at your property line.
Sure.
So, that, that's abundantly clear to everybody. That's what we're talking about, not what has been submitted to the staff and what's in our briefing books now, but the legal description that stops the road or vacates the road within this piece of property we're discussing for development.
Absolutely. We've, we've changed, uh, on the fly here, and that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, because i- if it's not allowed, then we're done. I mean, he's done. And so, absolutely, we do that.
Well, based on that, I'm, I'm willing to, to proceed with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Unless there's a problem.
No, sir, not at all. And, and I believe we have a legal description for what's described, because it was the original request. But I, I believe we all understand that it, it's that part, that segment in the center that, uh, passes over what we'll call parcel seventeen. I know there is an adjacent property owner here that I'm sure you all will want to speak with. Adjacent property owner, uh, an adjacent property owner had concern that the requested thirty-foot easement might lie outside your property. And I know you understand that, but for the record, I'll mention that the requested thirty-foot easement is from the developer. It lies within the subdivision. It does not impact any other parcels, so I will clarify that for everyone.
Yeah, so there would be two. There would be one on the south side and one on the northwest side.
Right.
And they have a design that they've submitted on the plat, and they would just add another one.
Right.
Keep, keeping it within
Sure.
the confines of this parcel.
Mr. Blalock, have you, have your, has your department reviewed this plat yet, at this point?
It's just been submitted as a preliminary. We have not.
Okay, there's no way to get it up on the screen?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, if you'll sit down just a moment, we'll hear, uh, any further discussion amongst?
Mr. Chairman, uh, if I could ask through the chair to, to Ms. Jones, uh, being this is gonna be changed, and, and there would be, need to be another turnaround easement, and, uh, this, do we need to advertise this again? You, you feel like we can go with it like it is?
Since what was advertised was larger than what is being vacated, I think we can go ahead. And since the requested easement will still lie within the subdivision and not on anyone else's property, um, which we couldn't do anyway, then I believe we can go ahead.
Okay, and then the second thing I'd like to mention is that there was a, we did have another phone call in opposition of, of any of the vacation, even, even the part within the, uh, the property that, that the board has said they would consider. Uh, and I think the reasons were, this, this opposition came from, uh, Leroy and Levy Grimes. Uh, they felt like the intersection of Alley, uh, Grimes Road, uh, that they would be forced to use to, uh, access, uh, Highway eighty-seven, uh, was a more, they felt like it was a more dangerous intersection because additional traffic associated with the Tom Thumb store that's across the road from that intersection.
Okay.
And, uh, so they liked to exit the other way out by the church by using Big Oak Loop Road. And, uh, they felt like that it would affect the back entrance to the church for some of the residents who now cut through Big Oak Loop Road to access the church. So, I just wanted to, the board to be aware that, uh, the Grimes do have, do oppose to, to any vacation.
And, and since I was gonna hold my comments until we heard some more, that has been indicated through the county attorney, the concern with, uh, entering and exiting Highway eighty-seven due to the Tom Thumb. And, and one of my caveats would be if we did this vacation, that the developer, uh, get with DOT and, and formulated way to, to save, you know, make that a little safer. Uh, we used to have impact fees that took care of that. I, my thoughts are legally, can we impose that as part of the vacation, or that they make safety improvements to that?
In the vacation process, the, the Board of County Commissioners determines that, or, or eliminates the public's interest in a parcel of property, and typically does not go beyond that.
Okay, if they hear us loud and clear now that we expect that when the development order's applied for, or where in the course of, uh, this gets to Roger's desk, that that needs to be on there? Hmm, kinda?
The development is designed to exit on eighty-seven, but not in the vicinity of the Tom Thumb. Or, or it's certainly in the vicinity, but not at an intersection with the Tom Thumb.
All right, I'm kinda between a rock and a hard place now, because between, you know, the entrance to the development and then the entrance to, uh, Alley Grimes, I'd like to see that nice and safe in there for the folks if we're gonna do this vacation. So, kind of in a catch-twenty-two, if we vacate it and they don't do it, they vacate it and do it. Help me out here. How do we, how do we, how do we assure these citizens that they'll, they'll have safe egress and ingress? Not only to the subdivision that's being built, which we will have control over, but another, what, fifty yards or a hundred yards down the road for the others, for the citizens that are gonna continue to use Alley Grimes? And you kinda following me on this?
Yes, sir. I, I wanna comment would be, and maybe?
If you, you'll have to come back up front if you're gonna speak, but I, you just...
Clearly, I'm not a road designer. I don't, I don't know, um, that used to be a two-lane road. Now, it's a, a big four-lane road, and, and I, and they also rerouted Alley Grimes a little bit there, trying to make it safer. So, I, I would just ask, perhaps the county could take a look at this, a fresh look at this with the four-lane. But crossing that road, Alley Grimes, uh, and turning onto eighty-seven to a four-lane hi, uh, to a four-lane highway, or two-lane highway, big two-lane highway, um, you know, is, is probably why they widen the road. It's much safer.
Okay. Uh, we, all right. Any help? Mr. Lynch, you're studying it pretty closely, if, well, I, I hope the board's kinda following what, what I'm, I think we do, following what we're getting here, or I'm trying to get here. Okay. All right. Sir?
Good morning.
Morning. I'm gonna open a Florida.
I'm sorta concerned myself, because if you bring up that other, uh, the other map that you had there, not that one, the one before that. As Big Oak Loop goes along, where it starts out on eighty-seven, it goes toward that curve there. I'm the one who owns those two pieces of property there that's together, those two. I, I have concern about the turnaround that's going to be there. Also, where is the designated thirty-foot, uh, area that's gonna be left there? That, when you get toward the other end, I'm the one who owns the twenty-nine point one designation that you had on that map. Their access to Alley Grimes Road, uh, is not, it's available to me, but just through the good graces of the, of Mr. Taylor there. That's, I don't know how, right there, that twenty-nine point one. You can see that that point comes right across the front of my property. And I know Mr. Taylor owns it, because, uh, one day, out there cutting the grass, and Mr. Taylor brought it to my attention, "Please don't cut my grass." I'm like, "What?" He says, "Yeah, I own right down to those pieces of equipment that are there, communications system that's there." It also goes through there. There must be another easement through there, because there's, the map that I have in my hand shows a dirt trail there. At the end of that dirt trail is some more of that communications equipment.
Okay.
So, I'm concerned about what's gonna happen to that end of Alley Grimes Road. The other concern is the other two pieces that I have there, the nineteen and the nineteen point two. Where is the roadway going to be that's going to be coming across? Where's it going to come? Through, uh, that designation number thirty-one? Because then I'll be living like in the middle of a four-lane myself. You know, I'll have Alley Grimes there and another major roadway with a lot of people running through there to get to the, uh, all that housing back there.
All right. I think we've clarified that this board's not willing to vacate, uh, the portion, thank you, that portion right there. See that they're indicating? We're not, there's no willingness of this board to, to vacate that.
Oh, good.
Okay, so that, that takes care of that piece.
So, that means I don't have to make payments on my helicopter.
There you go. The, uh, the other portion, nineteen-two, and correct me if I'm wrong, the thirty feet would be on the property seventeen, and the cul-de-sac would, the turnaround there would also be on property seventeen.
Wonderful. And now, where is the roadway that's going to go from seventy-eight onto number seventeen?
Well, we don't have that plot available to us as of yet.
Uh-huh.
You know, how?
And we don't have your name and address for the record either, sir. I'm, I'm sorry.
My name is Vincent Cappielli, C-A-double-P-I-A-L-I, and I'm currently living at nineteen-nineteen Church Street.
Thank you, Mr. Cappielli. Here's the answer to your question. This is not in our handout either. This has just been supplied to us.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Yep. Looks like that one piece of property of mine, the, uh, twenty-nine there, is gonna be like right in the middle of a, a roadway. I mean, you're gonna have, uh, Alley Grimes going there. And on the other side of the property there, they'll be very close by, is this roadway that goes, gives access to this ten acres.
Well, it would be where the hand's indicating right now. You see the hand?
Right, right there.
Who has it? Roger, you're doing it? Okay, all right. Our county attorney's kinda trying to decipher from the piece of paper you have to indicate where it's at, so I don't
Yeah.
I can't really follow you how you're gonna be that close on piece, piece twenty-nine to the road. 'Cause once it enters seventeen, it'll make a big oval around, as you're seeing there.
Yeah, that's, uh, what you have there is coinciding with going right across this dirt trail.
Yes, sir, the dirt trail, that's what we're talking about, taking the dirt trail out of prop, out of, out of seventeen.
Okay, I guess I'll have to just wait and see.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for taking my time. Very thankful.
You're welcome, yes, sir. We'll get some copies have made, 'cause I'm sure everybody's interested.
Sure.
At this time, anybody else with concerns? We're, this, this is the public portion of the hearing. Your name and address, please, sir.
Henry Jamison, uh, one-ten Rainbow Trail Crestview. Uh, what I wanna speak to is, uh, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-one. This is family land. It's been in our family for six generations.
Yes, sir.
That road we're talking about, Big Oak Loop, has been there almost a hundred years. Now, I understand we're just country folks, and it's just a little country road, but that's been accessed for, like I said, almost a hundred years. And just for a few more houses, and that's what that's about, moving the road, is just so they can cram just a few more houses in there. Uh, and what they don't mention is on this far side over here is a wet weather creek. And after it rains four or five good, hard days, you don't go down that end for another four or five days. It's been that way since I was a baby, and I'm fifty-some years old.
All right.
I just don't, I, I'm strongly opposed to vacating it, not because I don't wanna build a subdivision. I could care less. You know, progress comes. But just so you can have a few more houses, that's the only reason to vacate that road. And there is a lot of old country folks that ain't here today that use that road, just like they said, so they don't come out at that Tom Thumb. They come around through this backside here. It, it's been there forever. So, I, I, I just couldn't see the reason for vacating it, just to have a couple of more lots, you know? And it does create a safety concern.
All right, Commissioner, uh, all right. Commissioner Melvin, do you have a question?
Uh, just a statement. Uh, I value, and this whole board values, your property rights just as much as we value their property rights. Uh, we, we, uh, support what they wanna do, 'cause they own the land. They have the zoning to put the stuff in there. And it's, things are gonna change. I understand that.
We have no problem with that.
And I understand the point you made was well-made. However, uh, this board shows the same respect for their property rights as we show for these property rights. And, and that's our job is to
Right.
be sure everybody has a fair hearing. So, I, I understand the sentiment behind what you're saying, but it, it is their property, and they choose to develop it, and that's what we're here to talk about.
Yes, yes, I understand. But, you know, if another property owner, say, what's that, nineteen point two, wanted the same consideration to abate it, and he should have the same right if you abated the other part. Now, eighteen over there becomes landlocked, which is a part of our family land. It, it's, uh, it's hard to see it without you, you actually being on the road.
Well, see, eight.
The damage this would cause as far as, you know, getting in and out of properties.
How do you, how do you today access property number eighteen?
Sir?
How do you today access property number eighteen?
Big Oak Loop. And actually, you're cutting across twenty-two and twenty-one. These are all family properties. They've been, like I said, six generations, not just one, you know, aunts, uncles. It, it's, you know, and, and just the, you know, country where everybody, you can drive across the land and nobody's, you know, pitching a fence, sticking up fences, stuff like that, you know?
But we do need to clarify this, because right now, the way I look at this, with this other gentleman owning pro, property nineteen point two, I, I look at all your parcels as being landlocked, like.
Uh, yeah, actually, if he had the same theory, you know, I wanna vacate that too, so I can do something right there. You actually have no access to eighteen if twenty-two is sold to a stranger. You know, I mean, these, these roads, right now, is, is the complete access to all these properties. And another big portion of it is
Okay.
the east side of it is where that, where the creek crosses.
All right. Miss, let me ask County Attorney.
Well, I'll, I will just say that the requested vacation does not extend south from the point I've indicated on the map. So, um, the access or non-access to eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-one, and twenty-three will remain unchanged.
Okay. All right, so right now?
At this point, but if, you know, they have the right to do that. Where their property, the guy with nineteen point two should have the same right.
I understand.
And, you know, in the future, and it, it would be hard to deny him, you know, if you said it was good for the other guy.
We'll have to take that up in the future. Right now, we need to, and I appreciate you pointing that out to us, but right now, we need to, uh, pretty much contend with, you know, the property seventeen, but I, I appreciate you showing.
Right. But the reasons for not wanting to abate it, and like you say, from the front part there, and it's just for a few more houses, it's, it's not worth the destruction you do to everybody else.
Well, I can appreciate also what he's trying to do as far as leaving more oak trees too, so.
And, uh, well, that should be a crime. And actually, Santa Rosa County is really hard on cutting trees. I know people in the bars got in big-time troubles for cutting a little tree.
Yes, sir.
It would be unconscionable to cut trees this big around, you know? They were just big around when I was a baby. You know, they're gigantic. And, and it, it, the whole thing is just for a few more houses in there. And they say that would stop their subdivision. It won't stop their subdivision. For you losing a fl, a few lots, they're not gonna give up that whole subdivision.
Okay, all right.
You know, there's, and they keep trying to buy eighteen, 'cause they want the whole square, but, you know, it's family land, and we, we won't sell it.
Okay, all right.
But we shouldn't have a right, you know, to lose all the access to it. And give us a road that floods on the other end.
All right.
That's why it's a loop. It has to access at certain times of the year, you know, when it's bad weather, you can't get out that side. You know, it becomes a real maintenance issue over there.
You're talking about heading toward Alley Grimes?
Uh, no, on the other end of it.
Okay.
On the other end by the church, where they're talking about would be the only access in if you vacated that. Then you're looking at, after four or five hard days' rain, you can't cross four or five until the wet weather creek dries back up.
Okay.
You know, we can drive through it when it's a foot or two of water, but it's really deep, and you're gonna get a car stuck.
Okay.
You know, coming in from that side. That's when you have to access out by the Tom Thumb.
All right.
And if you drove out from there, it's already kinda shaky coming out by the Tom Thumb. And that's why most locals from Alley Grimes cut around Big Loop and come out, because the traffic's not so bad right there.
Okay.
You know, from coming out of that store.
All right.
And that traffic's just gonna increase with the subdivision going in.
Yes, sir. All right.
No problem with the subdivision going in. Progress has to go on, but not at the expense of everybody that's been there for generation after generation.
Mr. Chairman, we are only at the preliminary plat stage, and the staff is making comments, and I know that may change, but currently, the three-point turnaround, I'll use that term that's designed on the southerly part of lot twenty-three, may well bring access to eighteen, which doesn't currently exist. So it actually may solve the legal problem there.
Okay. All right. Anybody else from the public have comments, concerns? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Cynthia Swanson. I'm also a family landowner with eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-one, and then further on. The, I'm opposed to the abandonment of the county-maintained road through seventeen. I know when they walked that subdivision, they knew that there was a road there that people needed. If we can't get out that area, as my brother spoke earlier, and we're, we only have the Assembly of God access by the church, which there are hundreds of people that go, use that back area to go to the church. When it does flood, if seventeen is vacated, then we would like to do something with our family land at some point, and we, we feel that we will be landlocked. And without a lot of money going into some DOT process to alleviate the flooding, we feel that we, we won't be able to access our property at all. Therefore, we would have no value for our own property.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Clear me, I don't understand where the flooding area is, if you could.
Where it floods at?
Yes, ma'am.
It'll, it floods just about where you see the line where twenty? Where the line crosses eighteen to twenty? Can you, I can't, I don't have a pointer. Nope. If you move your little hand over by nineteen, and come straight down the blue road, a Big Oak Loop, right about there.
Can I get comments from Public Works on that?
There's not anything being changed there by this request. That stays the same. So there's, there's nothing being changed on that portion of the roadway. And you have to understand, as far as flooding, we'd be happy to look at it, but we're confined within what we can do to this very narrow prescriptive right-of-way. I don't even think the road's fifteen feet wide there, and that's the only place we can work, so we're pretty limited on what we can provide as far as any additional drainage features.
Our concern is that we won't be able to get out at all from lot eighteen. We won't be able to get out through the seventeen area.
Oh, okay.
I know when they bought that area, they knew there was a road going through there.
I really can't comment on the extent of the flooding. I'm not aware of it.
All right, thanks, Davis. Ma'am, do you currently, is there currently any houses on your properties, eighteen through twenty-three? Do you, anybody live there, or is it just vacant property?
No.
Just vacant property?
No. It's, it's not just property, but it has my mother's dwelling burned, and she died in that fire.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sir?
My name is Steve Wagner. I'm the owner of the property. A couple, a couple things first. Any development that needs to go in has to have a traffic study in the county of Santa Rosa. You folks all know that, I'm sure. Also, the, the right-of-way is a county-maintained right-of-way, but it's, 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 when I first bought the piece of property, I hauled nine truckloads of garbage off of this piece of property. And I was just out there the other day. People are dumping on it again, and I just feel like it could be served better, you know? We can do something for the community of this area. And you have all these young kids looking for homes, you know, that are coming here to live here after their military, their military stay. And I feel like this is, this is good for you folks. This really is. As far as flooding's concerned, if there is infrastructure put in back there, it will gather some of that water, you know? And that doesn't affect what we're talking about doing today. So that's how I feel. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Additional comments from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Historically, if I remember correctly, anytime that we're looking at vacating just a right-of-way, drainage, those things, if it's not being productive to the county, that's one issue. But historically, before we would vacate a road, we would require all adjacent landowners that's impacted by that road to agree to that vacation. Is that, I mean, historically, that's what we've done.
And I've discussed that this morning with the county attorney, and it's kind of an unwritten rule, but we're kind of also caught between a rock and a hard place here, because if you look at, if they withdraw it back to just the roadway or the trailway across property seventeen, the property owner owns both sides of the road. So if we were to adhere to that, to where it only, we only listen to the affected property owner, the property owner owns both sides. So it's kind of a catch-twenty-two, plus it's, it is something, and I agree, I, that's what we've looked at before. If there was objections, we, we didn't vacate, but this is kind of, I guess, why the five of us are up here, to put our heads together and figure this out.
Mr. Chairman, and there is a difference that the attorney needs to clear up, clear up in our minds, probably is the difference between a right-of-way and a prescriptive right-of-way, because they're not the same animal, are they?
Or an easement.
As a rule, it speaks to how we acquired the property, and perhaps somebody told me this was an old wagon trail or something like that, but, but it's a roadway that's of long use within the county, not dated to us, but of long use that we've maintained.
But there's no written document that we can point to that says, this is why we use that road.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's just community use over time, which is, in the legal field, referred to as a prescriptive situation.
That we've maintained.
So we, we have no legal document that we can point to that says, this is a road. We maintain it because the actions of some boards in the dim dark past, probably a hundred years ago. But that's, that's what we're dealing with here. This is, this is not a county road. This is a community-used trail that's, at some point in the past, the county began to maintain. So that's what we're dealing with. It's, we're not giving up right-of-way that belongs to Santa Rosa County.
Okay. I need some clarification from county attorney. Where, where are we going with this today? How far do we need to take this today?
I'll just mention again that, that when a county vacates a roadway, it doesn't do some of the things that we typically talk about, like decide who owns the leftover land or that kind of thing. The decision for the board is to decide whether to continue the public interest in the roadway or not. And if there is no reason to continue the public's interest, then you can vacate the road and thereby eliminate the public's interest.
Okay. At this point, I like the idea, I like the idea that they want to save some of these oak trees. I hope that they've heard loud and clear that there is a concern with safety, and that at some point will be addressed with Alley Grimes Road as you look into designing this subdivision. I think we've clarified for this gentleman that, that the cul-de-sac would be on property seventeen, not on nineteen-two. And also, there would be a cul-de-sac designed for accessibility to twenty-nine, one, twenty-three, and twenty-nine, and the, and the wedge, I'm gonna call it for, because it's not identified. That property, as I described, would, the cul-de-sac would have to be on property seventeen, unless the developer acquired that wedge and did it there. Ms. Jones, is there anything else I need to clarify? Okay. Randy, you have that pretty much? All right. Would, at this time, would be the wishes of the board to move it forward? Commissioner Melvin, it's your district. I'm gonna...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we've given both sides a fair hearing, and we've heard testimony from both sides, and it appears that there is the makings of a compromise. The owner has agreed not to, you know, ask us for something we're not gonna do, because we're absolutely not going to close the property affected that they don't own. But like I said earlier in my little mini sermon, I respect everybody's property rights, the right of the owners to develop, and the right of the neighbors not to be infringed upon. And I think we've pretty well handled that here this morning.
Okay. I hate to keep stirring this pot up, but according to this little plot that we've been given about Heritage Joke's primary plat, yeah, I'm not even gonna go there. All right. Anything else, Ms. Jones, I need to add to this? Where, where we need to take this? Does it move to another public hearing? Does it move to a vote?
You can dispose of it today with a motion.
Okay. I'll look for a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the vacation as amended in this long conversation to vacate solely the portion within the boundaries of the property owned by the requesting party, and I do so without objection.
All right. Hearing noted, passes. This time, we'll close public hearing. And we'll move on. The administrative committee will now open, and I'll turn to Commissioner Lynch for item number one A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go back over SB ten-twenty-four. We discussed it on Monday, generated a lot of interest, and I think some conflicting reports about what the original bill, original amendment attempted to do, and it has subsequently been amended. So I wanted to walk through that and let the board and members of the public know where we stand right now. I do have, yeah, here we go. This is the original language that was contained in the amendment to ten-twenty-four that was filed last Friday afternoon. One of the things that ten-twenty-four does or attempts to do is to establish a nonprofit corporation, Triumph Gulf Coast, to administer certain funds that come under the auspices of the corporation. That's done in paragraph one. You'll notice this is two. Paragraph two is the funding clause for Triumph Gulf Coast. This is the language that was in the bill on Friday afternoon. And it says, Triumph Gulf Coast, I'm gonna kind of paraphrase here, must create and administer the recovery fund. The principal of the fund shall derive from, so Triumph Gulf Coast has two funding sources, A and B. A says seventy-five percent of all funds recovered by the Attorney General for economic damage to the state resulting from the Deepwater Horizon disaster. This primarily points to the lawsuit that the Attorney General filed within the last week. The second funding source for Triumph Gulf Coast is contained in paragraph B. Any funds distributed under thirty-three United States Code twenty-one fifty-nine, or twenty-one fifty-nine, actually, that should be thirteen-twenty-one, I believe, T-one, C-one, I. And if you'll go on to the next page now, the language at that particular citation, thirty-three USC thirteen-twenty-one, T-one, C-one, or C-I-I, is the Restore Act, and it's a particular provision in the Restore Act. And that provision is the county pot. Says seventy-five percent of funding shall be provided directly to the eight disproportionately affected counties impacted by the Deepwater Horizon oil spill. So if you put it together, the funding language for Triumph, the second funding source is any funds distributed under the provision of the Restore Act that states that seventy-five percent of funding shall be provided directly to the eight disproportionately affected counties impacted by the Deepwater Horizon oil spill. I don't know how you can read that and not think that they're trying to go after the county funds. That's the plain language of the, of the statute. So that's, that's why the counties were a little bit agitated on Monday. I don't believe we were overreacting. I don't think we were imagining things. That's the plain language of ten-twenty-four as it was introduced on Friday. So if you'll go on down now, ten-twenty-four was amended Tuesday morning, and this is how it reads now. Again, the second funding clause for Triumph Gulf Coast, Inc., any funds distributed to the state under thirty-three USC thirteen-twenty-one, T-one, C-I-I. Now, again, that points to the seventy-five percent county pot. So it still points at the money that goes to, directly to the eight disproportionately affected counties. The language that they added clarifies that it only applies to any funds distributed to the state under that language. And it goes on to state that notwithstanding any other provision under this act, this act shall not affect any funds distributed to any county under thirty-three USC thirteen-twenty-one T., which is the Restore Act in total. So we're still evaluating and kind of holding our breath to see what happens next over in Tallahassee. The amendment improved things somewhat, because it clarifies that it only affects, it only goes after money that goes to the state from our county funds, which I'm not sure, hopefully there won't be any money going to the state from the county pot, you know? But Treasury is still working on the, the regulations that will implement the Restore Act. So we, we still have a long way to go on the federal side. I'll note that Congressman Miller, Congressman Sutherland's office, they got involved on Monday in this. They reiterated to the state government that the intent of the Restore Act was for this money to go directly to the counties. Senator Nelson's office got involved and did the same thing. So we do have some support on the federal side. Hopefully, the, the language that the Senate put in that was adopted as part of the amendment on Tuesday morning will, will stand and, and serve to protect the counties as we move forward. But I just wanted to clarify and put kind of out there for everyone to see exactly what transpired between last Friday and Tuesday and where we are now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch, again, thanks for keeping your eye on the ball here. My concern is, and either Commissioner Lynch or county attorney, help me out with this, who is Triumph Incorporated? And if this were to be imposed, are they subject to sunshine laws, open records laws, or once money goes there, what kind of shell game can they play with? That's, that's my concern. Who, who developed Triumph Incorporated? Who are these people? How are they related or connected to our state legislature? I mean, this is, this is aggravating me.
It's a stat, Triumph is a creation of this particular bill. I believe it, I believe the bill itself contains that they would, contains language to the effect that they would be subject to open government laws. Also, it contains language that this fund, whatever monies come into Triumph, are to essentially be amortized and, and paid out in equal increments per year over a thirty-year period. So, yeah, it will be an endowment. So look for three-point-three-three percent of the principal to be paid out per year for thirty years, rather than what, you know, what a lot of people were counting on as kind of a boost or a jumpstart to the economy.
So whoever designed this, Triumph Incorporated and this particular bill, has basically built in a thirty-year paycheck, because there's the, like I said...
It will be paid out. It will be maintained for thirty years.
Yeah. But, I mean, where I'm getting at is the people running Triumph Incorporated, CEO, staff, everything, you know, how much money's gonna be siphoned off to, to operate that corporation? That, that's gonna be some of my concerns, because, you know, I think it goes back to the original language. You got a Board of Commissioners, you got a BP Council in each county, and, and again, the counties need to be given free destiny from the state, not them holding the reins. And that's, that's kind of my feelings on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
I'd like to ask a clarification question. Commissioner Lynch, then the Triumph Corporation, as it, as it stands right now, would be looking at the other pots? Is that right? The other, the, the, sixty-five percent of the money will be, thirty-five percent of the money is in pot one. That's the, the eight disproportionately affected counties. Now, are they talking about the other sixty-five percent of all BP funds, the, the other money? Is that what they're talking about?
Not specifically. Not specifically. There's been discussion at the county level, you know, with, with FEC, as to whether or not this would in any way impact pots two or three. There's, there's that potential. The language doesn't reference the other two pots, other than to say that it would not go after, would not impact any money from the Restore Act in total, which includes pots two and three that goes directly to the counties. Now, pots two and three don't go directly to the counties, though.
They remain with BP and two, you...
It goes through the, goes through the consortium in the case of one pot, and then it's administered by the Gulf Coast Recovery Fund in the case of, of pot three.
Stinks.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Not to worry, though, because we now have comfort language built in.
Well, and that's kind of what I wanted to point out. I, I think the language that, that was inserted was actually a substantive change to this bill because, or to the amendment, because the language, as you can see, that was introduced Friday afternoon clearly attempts to go after the county pot. The language that was inserted Tuesday morning changes that to say any funds distributed to the state under the county pot. Now, there's still, you know, an argument that they wouldn't be able to pull that under Triumph anyway because federal law would control. And the federal law, the Restore Act, states that these funds go directly to the counties. So the, the state legislature can't overrule that. Just a lot of moving pieces, I think, and, you know, we're obviously sensitive to issues that, that arise over in Tallahassee, certainly during the last week or two of session. So I think we all need to be vigilant for the next week and a half and see what happens.
Good. Lane, again, I appreciate the, I'm sure this entire board and county appreciates your efforts on this. Thank you. All right. We'll move on now to item number one, unless anybody needs to take a break. All right, let's roll on. Item one, recommend bid in the amount of $473,751 from Robertson Excavation Incorporated for base bid and alternatives, 1A, 2A, 2B, for the Navarre East CD BG sewer project is low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item two, recommend rescheduling local restore council meeting on Monday, May 6, 2013, beginning at 3:00 PM in the board meeting room. Do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item three, recommend application for tax deeds on eight partials and authorize the execution of all relative documents pursuant to Florida statutes. Do so without objection. Therefore, it passes. Item four, recommend allocation of $18,000 for the promotion of the Bar Beach Singer-Songwriter Festival and $15,300 for the 2013 fireworks on the Bar Beach as recommended by the Tourist Development Council. Do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item five is an add-on. It's recommend a variance to floodplain management ordinance for structure located at 2,702 Hartman Court in Navarre. Staff has researched this and moved it to the board for approval. Hearing, hearing no comments on it from the board, I move without objection. It passes. Item six is our meetings. Unless otherwise noted, they will be held in this facility at the administrative center. They are listed for you with times and locations in their entirety. I move that meeting dates without objection. Hearing none, it passes. They can also be found on the county website. Item number one, under engineering report, is recommend resolution authorizing Florida Department of Transportation local agency program agreement for construction of paved shoulders on segments of Super Mukla Highway, County Road 197, and authorize execution of relative documents. I do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item two is recommend permitting City of Milton install three-inch force main on Peter Prince Airport property. There's been some slight modifications to that. I've talked to that with the engineering department. It, I move that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item three is recommend proposal including scope of work and fees for, from GeoSynTech Consultants in the amount of $156,5956 for the design of Cell C at Central Landfield. Do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item four is recommend proposal including scope of work and fee from HDR Engineering Incorporated for construction, quality assurance, and construction certification for landfill methane gas collection system. Do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item five is recommend final plat for Village at Grand Ridge, a 14-lot subdivision located in working District Five. Do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. At this time, we'll turn to Commissioner Lynchard for Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend resolution to Florida Department of Transportation authorizing submission and continuing support for eight current applications for federal transportation alternative program or TAP funding. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we'll turn to Commissioner Melvin for Public Works Committee. Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six items on Public Works this morning. Item number one is recommend a one-year extension of the agreement with Gulf Atlantic Culvert Company Incorporated for the aluminized culvert pipe at the current pricing, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is recommend one-year extension of an agreement with Arcadia Culverts Incorporated for your polyethylene and bituminous coated culvert piping at the current pricing, and I recommend we move this for approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is recommend purchase of a diesel pile hammer from Seabrook Steel Corpora, Corporation at a cost of $33,050 based on comparison shopping. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is recommend extension of a multipurpose path on East Bay Boulevard, an additional 670 feet west of Edgewood Drive, at an estimated cost of $35,000 utilizing previously approved funding. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is recommend installation of an always-stop signage at Bay Street and Oreo Beach Road intersection and Lorial Drive and Harrison Avenue slash Shady Pine Drive intersection, and I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is recommend a partial release of easement for stormwater drainage easement adjacent to the 10-mile road granted per Figure Eight, no, granted to Figure Eight LLC, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes Public Works, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Melvin, Commissioner Melvin, please continue with public, with the budget and finance.
Yes, sir. We have five items on budget and finance. Item number one is recommend budget amendment 2013-119 in the amount of $35,500 for fire services assessment rate study is approved at the April 11, 2013 board meeting. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is recommend budget amendment 2013-120 in the amount of $85,557, $85,557 to carry forward the funds in the self-insurance fund for the payment of workers' comp settlement agreements is approved at the April 11, 2013 board meeting, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is recommend budget amendment 2013-121 in the amount of $3,400 for the temporary services of Animal Services Department from the reserves for contingencies, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is recommend budget amendment 2013-122 in the amount of $70,000 for special primary and special general house District Two election on May the 14, 2013, and June the 11, 2013, from the general fund reserves. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is recommend the county expenditures and check register. I've reviewed the register and signed off on it and put it on your desk, Mr. Chairman, it's ready for your signature. I recommend approval without objection.
Thank you. It's signed and sealed and delivered, so we've moved that without objection, and the hearing none, it passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Melvin, any other comments from county administrator, attorney, staff, county clerk? Everybody quiet. Anything from the public forum? If not, we are adjourned.